Yes, I'll do that. Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham is not here. Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Lawler?
Here.
Mr. Sneed?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? And Mr. Hilsinger?
Here.
So we have six.
Six. Okay. The first item is need a motion for score sheet and summary from the executive meeting of February 1.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. That's my error. Was it the executive meeting was January 11th?
Oh, okay. I'm reading off the sheet here, so.
Yeah, that, yeah, I realize you are. Sorry about that.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. February 11th, need a motion to accept score sheet and summary.
I'll make a motion for acceptance. Sneed?
Elliott, second to motion.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Eyes have it 6-0. No committee reports. So we'll go to the first item, which is PC 01-21.
Okay, this is a request for a change in site in it's an outpour South County Mall. The request is for a change in zoning from C3 Shopping District to the C8 Plan Commercial District. You can see an aerial here. The site is located north of the right of way for Interstate 255, west of LeMay Ferry Road, sort of west. Here's the preliminary development plan. At public hearing, the petitioner indicated the proposed use of the site is a contractor's office in the existing building. They indicated they'd outgrown their existing operation in the city of St. Louis, so they'd acquired this property and wanted to use it for the contractor's office. Mostly, this would be, you know, used as the office space, as well as storage of their files and other records and some materials stored in the basement, such as shingles siding. But no outdoor storage is proposed, and there's no proposed sales of materials on the site. They indicated that customers might come to the site on occasion to make payments, but for the most part, it would just be the employees. They also indicated they have two to three trailers used in the operation, as well as a gutter truck, which is sort of like a box truck, which they use on the job sites to make gutters, you know, on demand. And those vehicles would be stored in the parking lot or indicated there would be some exterior improvements to the site, re-siding, repainting, additional landscaping, and there is a small pond they propose to repair. So the planning department is recommending approval of this request. We have brought it in letter of recommendation format tonight. The site has already been zoned commercially since 1965, when the zoning ordinance was adopted. We feel that this use is compatible with the commercial development in the surrounding area, you know, outskirts Saudi, South County Mall, as well as the intersection of LeMay Ferry and Lindbergh Boulevard. The use is relatively low in intensity, not many visitors to the site, mostly the employees. The conditions of development would prohibit outdoor storage, as well as require some additional landscaping to enhance the appearance of the site. So the staff feels that this use can be accommodated without detriment to the surrounding permitted uses, and we are recommending approval. And as I mentioned, this is brought to you tonight as a letter of recommendation.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion?
I'll make a motion, approve the letter as recommended by planning department.
Second to motion.
Question, anyone?
Yes, this is Sneed. Will we get a review of their architectural review for that?
I believe we put that as a condition, but if it's not, we will definitely add it, so you can have architectural review.
Okay, I would certainly appreciate that.
We'll have to add it. It's not in there, but we'll add it.
It used to be a store they sold ponds.
Right, that's correct.
Been vacant for quite a while, so. Anyone else? Okay, Lou? Lou's gone now?
It looks like Mr. Cunningham has joined us.
Yes, I am.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Eyes have it 7-0. And the next item is PC 02-21 Savoy Investments LLC.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I bring to you PC 02-21 Savoy Investments Incorporated, which is a request for rezoning from the C8 Plan Commercial District to the C3 Shopping District for a .39 acre site on the eastern quadrant of the intersection of LeMay Ferry Road and Lindbergh Boulevard. So for purposes of review, this is our, this is our site. The context, it is South St. Louis County. It is sort of in the commercial heart of South St. Louis County. South, South County Center Mall is just in the, just basically across the way. So zoomed in a little bit here, you see the site outlined in red. Its immediate neighbors are the St. Vincent DePaul Thrift Store, a pet care facility that had once been a fire station and a medical office, and the Ritz Retail Strip Mall Center. Staff is making a recommendation of approval of the request this afternoon. We do not have a site development plan for the site, but because this is a request for a straight zoning district, the C3 Shopping District, the petitioner was not required to provide a site development plan. But at public hearing, it was made known that the, that the desired redevelopment of the site is for a new quick trip facility. So this site will be developed as a, as a, with, with new gas station with pumps, a new convenience store. And this redevelopment will encompass multiple, more than just this parcel. It will include, it will encompass the, the pet care facility will be removed, as well as the St. Vincent DePaul Thrift Store will be removed, and it will be a fairly large redevelopment of this entire corner. So staff is making the recommendation of approval this afternoon for a couple of reasons. One, we find that the change in zoning from C8 Plan Commercial to C3 Shopping District is reasonable at the corner of two highly trafficked arterial roads. The range of permitted uses in the C3 Shopping District is appropriate for an intensely commercialized and auto-oriented corridor. This parcel was originally zoned C3 Shopping District with the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1965, and was rezoned to C8 less than 20 years ago. And reversion to the C3 makes sense and would bring it back into harmony with its adjoining zoning. And although not required to be disclosed at public hearing, again, this is going to be a quick trip, new, new quick trip facility, and it is desirable for any new redevelopment to include contemporary standards for landscaping, access control, lighting. And this development will go through all of the standard review processes for the county. And with that, I would request a recommendation of approval this evening.
Okay, we need a motion?
This is Sneed. I'll, I'll make a motion for approval.
For a second? Discussion, anyone? Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it 7-0. And the next one is PC 03-21 Dan Wagner, C2 to C8.
So I'm bringing to you 03-21, which is a request for rezoning for a parcel, a 4.7 acre parcel on the north side of Graboy Road, approximately 780 feet east of Denny Road, from its current C2 Shopping District designation to a C8 Plan Commercial District designation. Today, staff is making a recommendation of approval of this request with significant conditions in attachment C for, for the site. For purposes of review and context, the site is outlined here in red. It is made up of two parcels that come to the 4.7 acres in size. Adjoining uses to, it's sort of in a mixed sort of area. There's single family attached or single family detached homes immediately to the north. There is a multi-family development immediately to the west. Just to the south will be the future home of a site development plan has been approved, and it will be the future home of the St. Louis County Police Department's Third Precinct Headquarters. Additionally, to the east is a mixture of various commercial uses. And this commission may remember, not long ago, the Johnny Supermarket Site is just down the way a little bit, which is now the home to the Lindbergh Schools Headquarters Site. Next slide, please. So this is zooming into the aerial. You can see that the site is currently occupied by multiple structures. There is a, a, a two-story retail office structure that sort of fronts along Graboy with a several smaller garages that are largely vacant. There is a single-family detached home with detached garage at the rear of the site. Additionally, there is a large metal storage garage in the corner of the site, and then rounding it out is, and that sort of smaller second parcel is a auto, is an auto service facility that had long been a filling station pre, previous to its current use. Next slide. So at the public hearing held in January, the petitioner did bring a preliminary site development plan. It does show one structure occupying the site that would be 120,000 square feet in total area and two stories in height. Loading of the site would, would occur in a front loading bay that would be covered, as well as a rear loading bay. The site is, or the structure is two stories, and the site does have a significant slope to it, especially there around the middle. So the site does use the existing grading to create a stair-state design. So the rear of the structure appears to be one story, while the front of the structure along Graboy appears to be two stories. And that rear entry, that rear loading is for the second floor, whereas the front loading is there to provide access to the first floor. It does provide two commercial entrances, creating a one-way vehicular circulation, and I highlighted that circulation here with the purple arrows to show that acts, how access or how vehicles would access the site. Currently, the site is really paved all the way to the, to the right of way, so this will provide significant improvement to the site with significant access control to the site. All storage units are internal to the structure, so, you know, renters will not be able to come to the exterior of the structure. There are no, there's no ability for you to, you have to go in internally. Additionally, this commission may remember that in 2019, you all recommended, and the county council concurred with, with new recommendations for all self-storage facilities in unincorporated St. Louis County. One of the, one of the criteria was the establishment of a locational buffer of one mile between self-storage facilities. And we would note that this, that this well exceeds that this, the nearest self-storage facility in unincorporated county is a good two mi, nearly two miles away from this site. So it does meet those recently instituted criteria for this type of use. Next slide. And these were the preliminary architectural elevations that were provided at public hearing. The front of the structure was shown as a mixture of brick and metal paneling. There were some faux doors that were provided and a loading dock that was covered that did have, that did appear to have some form of finistration on it. So this is what was provided at public hearing. Next slide. In making its recommendation of approval this, this afternoon, staff is also recommending significant improvements to the site development plan that are found in attachment C. Staff did find concern with the amount of pavement that was at the site. So staff is recommending that the landscape buffer yards, particularly at the front and the rear of the site, be expanded to incre, to increase green space and reduce the amount of black, blacktop there at the site. Additionally, staff was concerned about the location of the front loading. The contemporary standards for self-storage facilities don't really recommend the use of front loading. And additionally, staff doesn't find that any use in St. Louis County, front loading is not necessarily a desired location to have that sort of use. So we are making a recommendation that there be no front loading to the site, that any loading be conducted on the rear or the side of the site. Additionally, staff finds that the overall height and size of the, of the building are appropriate for the size, are appropriate for the site. It's, it's nearly five acres in size. And additionally, all fencing should be decorative at the site. Next slide. A particular note and concern for staff was the visual appearance of the site. So we have written into it significant archi, the commission would have architectural review, and we are, we are including significant architectural requirements as part of that review. We are recommending the removal, again, of the front loading bay and move it to the side, requiring any roll-up doors be decorative with transparent glass or some sort of transparent decorative roll-up doors for that. Additionally, we recommend that no less than 35% of the front of the building, as well as the first 100 feet along both sides of the structure, be clad in real finistration. If you notice, these, these self-storage facilities nowadays, it is fairly common for them to have significant amounts of finistration and amounts of windowing, so that they can showcase the interior of the structure. And with, you know, with accent lighting, it can actually be quite attractive. Additionally, staff is recommending that the remainder of the site be treated with brick veneers, stone, some, some other type of high-quality design, as well as we're, we are recommending the inclusion of awnings and/or some other form of embellishment along windows, and that the remaining facade shall be a mix, as approved by the planning commission. And what I've done here is I've shown four pictures of just some contemporary use or contemporary self-storage facilities that have been constructed in the recent past in other jurisdictions, not in ours. But this is the, this is the quality of self-storage facility that is out there, and that staff finds would be appropriate to, to, to create that sort of recommendation for our jurisdiction as well. So in conclusion, this afternoon, in making this recommendation, we find that C8 Plan Commercial is appropriate for a large redevelopment site that has been home to commercial uses for a significant period of time. Self-storage as a use is acceptable at the site. It generates a low number of vehicle trips as compared to other commercial uses. In fact, we suspect there will be a, a decline in the number of vehicular trips to this site from its existing use with some retail at the site. All loading should occur internal to the structure, and no loading zone should be permitted along Graboy Road. Architectural review by the commission is required with significant, with a significant number of stipulations on how that structure should be designed. Any freestanding signage should be monument style to further improve aesthetics along Graboy Road. And although it was not requested at public hearing, we did put in a stipulation that the petitioner could put a protective canopy for boat and RV storage, as approved on the site development plan. And with that, I would request a, a recommendation for approval this evening from the commission.
Okay, we need a motion? Anyone?
This is Sneed. I'll, I'll make a motion for approval, but I do have questions.
Okay. Second to motion.
Okay.
Bill Ballard.
Discussion, Bill?
No, I said I'll second that motion.
We got a first and second discussion?
Yes, this need. The, the fencing should be decorative. Does that mean it'd be site-proof? And word specifically, is the fencing especially relative to the residential?
Sure. So I think, I, I think in the conditions, I had, I had written just decorative, site-proof or not, depending on its location, as approved on the site development plan, with the expectation that site-proof would be provided along that northern property line, and particularly around any boat and RV storage that is ultimately permitted at the site. But wanted to give some flexibility in the types of fences, just depending on the site. You know, adjoining it to the west is a multi-family development, so that could be, staff would find that, you know, maybe like a, a black wrought aluminum fence that's decorative could be appropriate there. But we would most certainly find that site-proof would be appropriate where it adjoins single family and around the proposed RV and boat storage.
Okay, and, and what about the RV and boat storage? Can you sort of point out where that will be?
So it, it would be at the northeast corner of the site. You know how the site sort of does this, yeah, where Mel is currently circling for me. That is where they are showing it. At public hearing, they didn't, they showed nine parking spaces. But we wrote the condition vaguely enough that the commission, once we bring the site plan to you for your approval, there's, there's some openness in the amount of spaces. We didn't put a hard cap on it, but they do have to show and provide the number of it before it does come to you for ultimate approval of the site plan.
Okay, I think you, you've done a, a, a very nice job of looking at the finishes of the, of the building. I think that's critical for that, for, for, for that development to really be appropriate.
We concur.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Eyes have it 7-0, and we'll go on to PC 04-21 and 05-21 McBride Barrel Lane Company.
So this is a request for a very large site at the end of Telegraph Road in the Merrimack River, just east of the county line. It's a 26.2 acre site located in the northeast quadrant of Telegraph Road and Fine Road. And the request is for a change in zoning from NU Non-Urban District to the R2 15,000-square-foot Residence District, as well as a PEU Planned Environment Unit Procedure in the R2 District. So you can see here, the site is comprised of one large lot, which was most recently occupied by a single-family structure and some outbuildings. The site does have a lot of topographical issues. We have seen this before, before this commission, for a few development proposals. This proposal includes, I don't know if someone could silence their phone. Is that you, Mr. Hilsinger?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so this proposal is for 53 single-family detached residences. You can see from the site plan here, the preliminary site plan shows one street ending in a cul-de-sac. The street sort of follows the contours of the site up as it curves around. All of the home sites are located east of the Ameren Transmission Lines, which are sort of along the Telegraph Frontage. I've, I've shown the common ground in green here. Common ground does equate for about half of the site in the preliminary plan. The proposed lots, lot, lot sizes range from about 7,200 feet, square feet, to almost 11,000 square feet. There are five detention and water quality basins shown throughout the site. You can see them here in blue. And then we'll go into some of the features. There is a, a creek, a, a definable creek in the northern part of the site, shown here with the darker blue line. And then the lighter blue shading demonstrates the 25-foot no-disturb buffer required from creeks. So you can see the tension basins are in the lower part of the site closer to the creeks. And then there is some tree massing shown to remain, shown here in green. But you can see that there is a lot of grading throughout the site. Contrary to previous development proposals, this proposal does not include any retaining walls. So while the grading is extensive, there are no retaining walls proposed in order to create these home sites. Looking at the southern part of the site, you can see the red line here, these lots, about the Forest Creek subdivision to the east. And there is sort of a berm that's created here. You can see, if you can see my cursor, sort of a high point here where the home sites in Forest Creek are lower than the property line, as well as the proposed lots, 36, 37, and 38. Again, there are some tree mass areas to, proposed remain shown here in green. Subsequent to the public hearing, planning staff did have some conversations with the petitioner, and they have shown here a possible stub-street connection with a temporary T-turnaround to the vacant property to the south. Department of Planning is recommending approval of this request. We feel that with some modifications to the site plan, the preliminary plan is responsive to land year's context and topographic constraints. We would require a minimum lot size of 7,200 square feet and a 60-foot lot width. We are recommending a landscape easement in the rear lots of, rear yards of Lot 36 and 37, where I had shown that red line where the lots about the Forest Creek subdivision. And we would also require some significant landscaping. In addition to preserving the existing mature trees during and after construction, we would recommend two trees per lot, and then some significant plantings in the common ground as well. So in, I'll go back. In these heavily graded common ground areas, we are recommending two trees and four shrubs per 20 linear feet of property line in the backs of lots 40 through 50. These will be planted off-center to sort of help recreate that, you know, tree canopy that existed before. Also, in the graded common ground areas, we are recommending Missouri native ground cover, the sort of ground cover that's really low maintenance and would be sort of a no-mow area to help restore some of those native grasses. As I indicated, we are recommending approval. Staff feels that the R2 Residence District zoning is appropriate. There's R2 District zoning abutting the site, and R3 in the vicinity as well. And most of these developments have used the PEU procedure, so we feel that the use of the PEU is appropriate here. It's comparable to the other developments, and it allows for some flexibility to preserve some of these site features and sort of keep the home sites away from like the creek areas. Planning does support the, the proposed T-turnaround. We feel that it would allow for a connection to the properties to the south when they are developed, and in the end, could possibly allow for connectivity to the Rogers Elementary School to the south, so that schoolchildren might, might even be able to walk. As I mentioned, there are no large retaining walls proposed to make this development happen. Staff would also note that blasting is proposed in the developer's proposal. There are blasting code requirements in place to protect existing property owners, and those would be included in the conditions of development to ensure that it's done correctly. And we would note that, that other developments in the area of required blasting as well. So it's sort of to be expected for any development on this site. With that, we are recommending approval of this request.
Okay, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval, but I have a question.
Okay. Back in a motion.
Okay, my question, is this the same one, the same petition we heard on 1-6?
The public hearing was January the 25th.
Okay, so it's not the one where there was an internment. Maybe I'm getting them mixed up. There's no internment on this property, is that right?
No, that was raised at public hearing.
Okay, 1-6, okay, I'm getting them confused. All right, that's all, that's the question I have. Okay, thank you.
Great. Anyone else?
The I think we all recognize this is a fairly difficult piece of property to develop. And obviously, they're, they're trying to do it and, and, and make use of as much of that space as they can. The, are, are these, are these streets county-approved? And does the T-turn, does that accommodate emergency vehicles, stuff like that?
So these streets are proposed to be public county roads. The T-turnaround is proposed to be temporary, but it would have to be approved by The T turnaround is proposed to be temporary, but it would have to be approved by the fire district and the county department of transportation.
So, so are we saying temporary, it'd be asphalt instead of concrete?
I believe so. Is that, do I have that correct, Gail, that it could be asphalt?
I, I don't think necessarily that's what that means. It would be anticipating a development occurring on the property to the south. I think it could be all in concrete versus asphalt.
Yeah, because, because the asphalt turnarounds, I haven't seen that done in a lot of while. They, they, they really don't last. And what temporary becomes permanent? And it, it just, I, I would definitely suggest that if this is approved, that it be all concrete. The, the size of the lots. It's, it 7,200 would be obviously a bare minimum for the in, in terms of square footage, but the, as I understand, it, it would allow for five-foot side yards for each house, which would be a total of 10 foot between homes. That really gives an appearance of, is that correct?
That is what's shown on the preliminary plan.
Right. And that really gives more of a look of, of attached homes in, in an area that's, it's not consistent with surrounding subdivisions or anything else. So it would seem to me that we should maybe work towards trying to get a layout that would provide larger than that 10-foot at a minimum of side yards, which would be 20-foot to give them more of a single residence look consistent with the, the surrounding areas. I don't know if anyone has a, a view. Where's that?
Yeah. Anyone else? Want to weigh in?
So you can see I've brought the aerial back up that the homes to the north on Ridgeview Manor. They sort of have a similar, they have some tighter side yards up there. Well, that's not the case in, in Forest Creek, but.
Unfortunately, got put in there and, and I think that's one of the concerns that this development is going to have the same look and effect when it's not abutting the homes that have, I mean, the last two developments have, have wider yards. I would, if, if, if the
The planning commission can, can modify the lot width and the side yards as far as, you know, in those detailed conditions.
If, if no one opposes that, I would, I would ask the those who made the motion and second to, to consider that.
I made the motion for approval. If the rest of the planning commission feels that way, I have no problem withdrawing that motion.
What about the second?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and withdraw.
Do you want to withdraw or you want to allow for the setbacks? I'm in your, I'm in your second.
Well, I'm in my second, but I, I think the staff should go back to the developer and see what they can possibly do before we just throw a 10-foot out there.
Is that okay with you, Bill?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. As long as we work with them to, to try and achieve at least that. Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we put her on hold then?
There we go. I make a motion for a hold.
I second emotion. Hello.
Do you think you'd want to see a revised plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's see what they say.
And, and specifically it's the side yard that you're looking at, which obviously will affect the lot width, but you're looking for a 10-foot side yard?
Well, I
Something greater than five?
Yes, that, that's for sure. And there's several of those lots that really increases the average number quite a bit. That would not be a problem to do that.
Okay. Well, we can certainly.
Like they'd have to change every lot to achieve that because I'm sure some of those lots are, are, are wide enough to do those things.
We, we have a public hearing scheduled for March 22nd. So I think we could probably get back with the petitioner and, and get something back to you by that date.
Okay. Be, be great.
Okay, we got a motion. Got a second for a hold. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ice have it and letters for approval. We already approved that prior. Eric Gallagher. So we'll go to correspondence. We got two items.
This is, this is Debbie. The first item is the, the annual report from Fred Weber Quarries, which is PC 4675 and 4878. This is, these annual reports are required by the, the two CUPs and the planning commission action in this case would be receive and file.
Okay, we have a motion to accept.
I motion this bill Ballard.
Second emotion Keith.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ice have it. And then we've got one last item. PCO five oh oh.
Mr. and Mrs. McCallum, this is a conditional, oh, I left stuff out. This is a conditional use permit in the non-urban located at the terminus of Forest Circle Trail Road. Next slide please. So basically it's, it's in it's down, it's down by the river. It's at the terminus of in the lower right-hand, lower left-hand corner of this, of this map. And it's at the, it's an eating disorder clinic that's been operating there for 20 years via the conditional use permit. Next slide. This is the site plan. As you can see, you come down Forest Circle Trail and the parking is, is in, is near in the center. This building that is at the far south or or right side of the site plan is the administrative offices, the dining, the recreation area for the patients who are at this eating disorder clinic. And the building that's a little, that's more in the center of the site plan is the, is the residential facility. And their propose, what their request is, next slide, is to add two more patients to increase the number of patients that are served, served from 10 to 12. No increase in the building size is proposed. They're making some changes to the interiors of the building and redistributing some space. The department is recommending approval. We would note that this eating disorder clinic has operated here for, for 20 years and once the, there were some, there were some issues initially with some outpatient services, but no outpatient services are occurring at this point in time. And we feel that they can accommodate the additional two patients with, without detriment to the surrounding development or or properties. We are recommending approval.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept.
Elliot, second.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Ice have it. Do we have any site plans?
I don't think so.
We do not.
Okay. Then we're done. We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Could I, could I have your, your attention just for a couple of minutes? You can go ahead and adjourn. This is unrelated to the agenda.
I second, I second Bill Ballard.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, ice have it, we're adjourned.